Okay. All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley's Board of Education for Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zith.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So, welcome and thank you for joining us, and we will start our meeting, as always, with Rob Anderson's superintendent report.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, board members. We have some visuals for you this evening in regards to our superintendent's report. I want to start by talking about school visits nearing the end, I believe we're in the 50s in regards to the number of schools we visited. It's had some really fun visits over the past few weeks, was able to go to University Hill on the 100th day of school, and as you could see up there in the upper-left, folks dressed the part, which was really cute. We had a great conversation, had an opportunity to also engage at Centennial Middle School and New Vista High School, and again, just great conversations, a great way to continue to keep our work grounded in the work that's happening in schools and continue to keep that lifeline open, so wonderful school visits. I've got really exciting news in regards to Boulder Tech. A few weeks ago, as you remember, Dr. Arlie Huffman, Dr. Crespo presented on Strategic Initiative 5B. We talked to you all about how we'd be fast-forwarding that initiative and making sure that we're supporting our CTE programs in the right ways, and I wanted to just use this opportunity to give you a quick update. There was an open house last night that we've been doing a lot of promotion for. We had great turnout. So far, our Boulder Tech, our CTE program, they've registered 220 students for tech classes, and we still have plenty of time. The official registration at the high schools isn't even underway yet, and so I'm very proud of the work that Dr. Huffman and our team is doing in regards to promoting Boulder Tech, also the work that's happening within our Southwest Area Network and Communications, who has done a really great job, and I think you have some t-shirts here, so you can help us promote as well. And what we're trying to help, let our community know about Boulder Valley's best-kept secret, which is our Boulder Tech programs. And so, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Randy Barber, Chief Communications Officer, because I want him to share with you some of the promotional videos that we've got going, and just some of the energy in our district right now that is around our technical programs at Boulder Tech. So, Randy, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good night, or good evening, directors. Good night, everybody. It feels like a comedy pit. Marty Dunn. As Dr. Anderson mentioned, we have been working on a lot of promotional materials, and again, I really want to give a big shout-out to both Boulder Tech and also our Southwest Area Network. We've done a lot of work to actually hear from students. They actually had a great focus group in which they spoke to them about, you know, their experiences, but then also what they thought other students would want to hear in terms of, you know, coming to that center and learning about it. As you can see, our biggest thing that we heard back was that it is our biggest secret out there, and we don't want it to be that way. So, we thought it'd be kind of fun to kind of, you know, use that as our way to kind of get people excited about it. So, we actually had pulled all the students together last week, gave them all t-shirts like the ones that you got. You also noticed that you got a bag of cookies, and the reason for that is because this is not your grandma's Bo-Tech anymore. So, all this, yes, so it's, yes, that's what all the students, kind of the face that they made as well. So, but one of the things that we've done is create several videos that are going to be sent out to the schools for them to show to students. As you might know, this is kind of their registration period. The schools are going to hopefully help us to push more people to know that this is out there. And so, I'm going to start with cosmetology.
This is the hairstyling program at Boulder Tech. It's very cool. This is a two-year program. First year, we learn all of the practices for how to style hair, cut it, perm it. Second year, we do more practice with it. So, it would cost a lot, and here it costs nothing for you to do this program. I think it saves me something like $20,000. The teacher is really important. I do look forward to school because of all this. It's really fun.
The next one I'm going to show you, I believe, is welding, and it's just pretty spectacular to see what these kids are doing in that class.
I'm in welding class today. I was surprised that I have this option for any sort of high school. There's people who plan, there's people who do electricity, and I thought this was top-of-the-line, one of the coolest things we could do. I could go weld underwater, I could go weld a spaceship, like you can go so far with this.
Boulder Valley having three astronauts, you know, that came out of our program, I think that's quite possible, that our future students could possibly be welding as astronauts up in space somewhere. Our next one is our construction program.
This is the Boulder Tech construction. I got it on my shirt. Behind me, we're building a shed. The shed's really intense carpentry. There's nothing like getting out there and actually building something. It really solidified for me what I want to do. Majority of us are going to go into construction. It's a lot better than staying at school all day.
The last one is about early childhood.
The sun shines high above.
We're in the ECE classroom, and I'm learning how to teach children. ECE stands for Early Childhood Education.
There are a lot of many women there.
Today, we were doing circle time, and we were teaching stories based on what our spirit animals are. With this program, we are able to then bring to light then how children learn and how they develop and how they grow as a person. I hope to take all of my experiences here and then take it with me into my future because I really want to become a teacher. It's so fun.
We're doing five videos as part of this first series, and then we're going to actually do all the rest of the programs. The last one that will come out tomorrow morning is about how students that are really interested in college can apply the things that they can do at Boulder Tech towards that. For instance, you know, if you want to be an engineer and you want to get that hands-on experience with working on, you know, machinery, you can do that there. If you want, you know, obviously to be our architect, you can work in construction, try to make some of those connections for students. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Randy. Just really amazing work. For those of you that are watching at home, if you'd like to learn more about Boulder Tech, go to bouldertech.org, and you can learn all about the programs that we offer. Finally, I think we've got one more slide to share, Randy.
What's that?
I think we have one more slide to share.
Let me get there. There we go.
So, last week, we felled our first Career Pathways event. Board members, this is one of the efforts that's being led by our Chief of HR, Mike Rados, to make sure that we are encouraging our employees of color as they work towards becoming teachers in BVSD, and as part of this effort to ensure our staff reflects the diversity of our students. I think I've shared this with you all, 13% of our teachers are teachers of color, and 31% of our students are students of color, and that we will need to double the number of teachers of color over the next five years to be able to match the diversity of the community we have the honor to serve. And so, this was a great event that Mike hosted, and talking with Mike, we had 25 candidates there, and so very excited about this effort as part of our work within the strategic plan, Strategic Initiative 6B, which is intended to increase our cultural responsiveness as a school district, and so excited about that. And then finally, I'm proud to announce that Boulder Valley, along with our partner districts in Gunnison, Canyon City, and Greeley, were tentatively awarded the Senate Bill 204 grant that I spoke to you all about, and looking at ways that we could improve the statewide assessment or district state performance framework, district performance framework statewide assessment system. So, we're excited to get working on that. I want to thank all of our staff. I want to thank Kathy as well for her work and support in that, and so lots of great things, and that is my report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Rob? Kathy?
I just want to add to your thanks, Rob. I think Jonathan did a great job coordinating all of this. It was a lot of work, and thank you for taking the lead on this, because the smaller districts, I don't think, would have been able to do this without your lead and without Jonathan being willing to put his, you know, his good work forward, so thank you for doing that, and I look forward. And we're also partnering with the university, I think, to do the metrics and the evaluation, so it's a nice partnership with surrounding districts. I think Sheridan's also involved, so I think it's just, thank you for doing all that, and Jonathan's not here, but thanks to Jonathan for doing such a good job.
Any other questions? I just have a quick question. I had a couple parents connect with me. Their kids were very excited about the Boulder Tech program, but realized they couldn't fit it into their schedule at their neighborhood high school, and I suggested they just let their counselor know that they're interested in that class, so that the high school knows. Is that the best thing to do?
I would connect them with their counselor or an administrator at the school. You know, the schedules that they had this year versus the schedules that they have next year could be different, right? So, depending upon how schools are scheduling, and I know that our team is working with our high schools to make sure the kids have access.
I think from us with transportation, there was just no way, but I just want you to know the interest certainly was there, and there was a lot of excitement, so there might be some logistical barriers. All right, so our next item is public participation. We recognize the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. We ask that you can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes, and we ask, just please recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. So, you can see that there's a timer here for the two minutes. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. At that time, please wrap up your comments, and that's it. Tonight, we have one speaker, Katherine Meng.
So, I actually just have a question for the board. It's about open enrollment, and it's about swapping in for during the open enrollment process. I understand that was experimented a couple years ago. My understanding, based on what I read, generally achieved the goal that the board set out to achieve. I understood there was some misunderstanding from the parents, some of the parents from certain school districts, some related to that. So, my question to the board really is, are there any plans in place to continue that experiment? If not, why not? As I see, that is clearly beneficial as far as, you know, giving students the opportunity to attend the school they want to, so that's it.
Thank you. That concludes public participation. Our next item on the agenda is board communication. So, who would like to start?
I can start.
Okay.
So, before our work session today, we had the audit committee meeting, and so I want to just talk a little bit about that. We really went over all of the financial statements pretty thoroughly. Bill did a great job of explaining everything, so at least, so I understood it. I hope everybody else did, but the biggest takeaway I took from it is, one, our spending is on target. We're just a little under 50% of spending compared to what we've budgeted, so that's a good thing. Couple other things are, we've earned more interest than was budgeted because of higher short-term interest rates, and then we, the other changes in the budget have to do with our share of the CDE Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Early Childhood Grant Funds, which was given to us to help us buy furniture to equip our full-day K program. Anything else I should say, Rob?
I think you've got it.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Other comments or questions? Other comments or questions? Rob, Richard?
The lady left, but anyway, I want to thank her for coming up and...
We're out answering your question.
Okay. I visited Meadowlark, Meadowlark P8 last week or the week before, thanks to Robin. She took me around, and we, I went because there was a parent that was concerned about the overcrowding at Meadowlark. So, I wanted to take a personal look at it, and what I learned at Meadowlark is that they have actually some low ratios. The one that's challenging is the first and second grade Community Learning Center or group that they have. There's about a seven-to-one ratio there. They have 173 students there, but the rest are pretty in line with the rest of the school district. So, I just wanted to make sure that I felt comfortable in terms of hearing that and then going out there and checking it out myself, so. Thanks, Rob, for setting that up for me, and I really appreciate it, and thanks to the principal, and thanks to Robin.
Do you serve Kathy? Kathy?
I should maybe know the answer to this, but today, the two leading education organizations for teachers came out with a policy on lockdown drills and how to handle those, and I was wondering, do we tell, do we, I was at Fairview today for coffee with the principal, and there was a lockdown, and it seemed like at least it was publicized ahead of time to at least the administrators, but there's increasing evidence, I think, of the impact that these lockdown drills can have on students and staff, and I just don't know what our policy is on it. Do we? The article says that Newtown doesn't even do them anymore, and if Newtown's not doing them, you kind of wonder. So, I just don't know. You don't have to answer now, I just was putting that question out there for how we're handling our lockdown drills and how we're measuring the impact, positive and negative, on our students and staff for it.
I can get with staff and get you an answer this week.
And then, last week, I had the benefit of being able to attend the NSBA Equity and Advocacy Conference, and I was hoping, Rob, I could send you some of the information from both of those, that you could attach to news and notes and whatever else we would want to have. There was some good information about addressing equity at the school level. I have to say that issues of equity at this conference were notches below the surface. They were definitely right there, and a lot of tough conversations were going on, and so I would love to pass along some of that. The top issues for the NSBA continued to be full funding of IDEA, funding of the Higher Education Act with some supports for hiring teachers. Those were the two of the biggest things that we addressed at the advocacy conference. And then I learned today, standing in the freezing cold on a trail in Boulder, that from a friend of mine who now heads up the oil and gas regulations for CDPE, that in Denver Public Schools, there's a partnership with the County of Denver and the school district where every elementary school has an air quality monitor to monitor the air quality outside. I know we have air quality inside, and it's a way for the students to kind of buy into and understand what the air quality is, and he said it was just a really nice partnership between the city and county, the school district, and the, and I thought it might be something we could at least talk about at a later date. I just thought it was interesting. And what I liked about it was the student engagement around those issues. I know we already have, Tina's helped me understand those policies around idling and those kinds of things at schools, and, not policies, but practices, best practices around that. And so, that's one of the things we're also trying to educate students and parents about, and I would think educating students is going to be the first step to educating the parents, right? So, they get in the car, "Mom, why are you keeping the car idling?" So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, yeah, great.
I just wanted to thank Kathy for mentioning the lockdown drill and share my own experience that my kindergartner had his first lockdown drills this year, and he, from both his account and his teacher's account, spent the drill with his arms wrapped around his best friend while they were both sobbing, and he had nightmares all night long that night, and he keeps asking when another one is going to come because it was so scary. So, I just want to point out that I think it's important, and I'm glad the teachers are, the unions released those reports today, and you're suggesting we pay more attention to it, because from our experience as a family, it was a lot. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good thing to think about, and a good thing to have a community conversation, because we've heard from all sides. We've had speakers here looking for metal detectors. We get ideas for further security ideas, you know, tools to buy in, just seeing how we can balance the different concerns of the community when we think about safety, so, and, you know, what we're doing to our kids. So, our next item is, yes?
To mention that I did get a response on my RFI in terms of suspensions. I don't know if you all saw that.
Yes.
That is pretty alarming, and I'm wondering when we are going to have a conversation on that and see what we can do to either work with our school personnel around those issues, because, you know, when you look at Latino students are three times more, what do you say, three times more likely to be suspended than your white students, and then plus the fact that you have a lower Latino population. I think we really need to start doing something about that as soon as possible, so I'm really concerned about that.
And maybe it would be helpful, because we talked about how we're developing policies and doing training to do more systems-wide bullying and prevention, to maybe talk about a process map, just so that we understand what the timeline looks like.
No, absolutely, and Richard, incredibly alarmed as well. And I know that our team that has been working on our strategic plan specifically focused on discipline and unpacking our current system, which actually promotes inconsistency, because we don't have district-wide systems in regards to the way that we have guidelines, right? So, as I look at this, I don't look at this as a people issue, I look at it as a systems issue first, and then once you fix the system, then you can go through and do some of the trainings. Our goal is to have that done by the end of this year, so to be ready for next year. So, I'm happy to provide more context for the board on this. Please know that the information that you've looked at, we've been looking at for at least six months, if not longer, and it's really helped driving the way that we change our practices. Our Latino Parent Advisory Council has been very helpful in sharing their concerns around this issue with us, and we're moving to action, so we can talk about it. But in the meantime, we're actually trying to fix and change the system that we feel like is a part of the issue, and so I can provide more context on that, but as we move forward with the strategic plan, that's, we are doing something about that.
There's, the Aspen Institute has done a lot of work around the, what I think what they're termed as the racial equity theory of change. I don't know if you've heard any of that, but it's a really good reading, a lot of research has been put in there, and, you know, when we start looking at disproportionate number of kids that are being suspended, things that they're suggesting people to look at are policies, how the policies really lead to suspensions, and also working with staff around some of those particular issues, because it's, we just need to do something. So, I would ask staff to look at the racial equity theory of change that the Aspen Institute put together.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so our next item, and Kathy, thank you for setting us up, is 6.1 indoor air quality update, not outdoor air quality.
Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. I'm Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. We began this work in the spring of 2016. The district, in partnership with Dr. Richard Shaughnessy, University of Tulsa, and University of Colorado researchers, we looked at ways that we can improve the indoor equality in our building and start promoting that through bond work and other avenues in the district. So, I want to take this time and really thank Dr. Shaughnessy, Dr. Giddy Carroll, and Molly McLaughlin for leading this work. It's been a lot of meetings, a lot of nights, a lot of nights collecting data, et cetera. So, they're going to expand on the great work happening in the indoor air quality initiative, so at this time, I'll turn it over to Gita.
Thank you. Oh, great, okay. So, the Boulder Valley School District understands that the quality of the indoor learning environment impacts the health and performance of our students and our staff, and that indoor air quality is a key component of this. So, staff are working in several different ways to monitor and protect indoor air quality. First, improving indoor equality is a target outcome of the work of the 2014 bond. Second, in partnership with the University of Tulsa and University of Colorado, for the first time, we're really able to track and evaluate the impact of the work. And finally, through the partnership, the district has developed an indoor air quality advisory team, which assists administrators by reviewing IQ-related information and recommending IQ procedures and policies to maintain, improve indoor air quality in the school buildings. So, I'm first going to start to talk about the work that we are doing in the bond. The 2014 bond work preparation and implementation has given the district a unique opportunity to touch all schools and then make improvements in many areas, including indoor air quality. Additionally, the district has a strong commitment to sustainability and has goals, which are supported by board policy and outlined in detail in the district's Sustainability Management System and Sustainable Energy Plan. Staff created the Green Building Guiding Principles to outline how our sustainability goals have overlapped with the bond. These guidelines are shared and tracked with every single bond project and covers many areas, including energy efficiency, waste management, material selection, and indoor air quality. These priorities are also embedded in BVSD's technical specification, which every project uses. So, some of the specific strategies that we've been using in the bond, that in order to track sustainability improvements, we've been using a truncated Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design checklist, which is a lead checklist. So, staff have asked all projects to maximize points in the area of indoor environmental quality on this checklist, which includes things like improving thermal comfort, using products with low volatile organic compounds, such as paints and sealants, and also increasing natural daylight when possible. One of the main ways we've been able to improve IQ through the bond is by making improvements to our heating, ventilation, and cooling systems, and by commissioning these systems in every single project, which ensures that the systems are operating as they should, maximizing comfort and efficiency. Also, as part of the bond, we have been working with all school staff before construction to recycle and purge items when possible, and we have partnerships in place that help us do this, and this ultimately helps to reduce clutter and makes the things then easier to clean. Along these lines, when we opened up the new schools two years ago, they were given guidelines on best practices for maintaining indoor air quality, including restricting personal furniture, plants, and pets in the first year to minimize allergens, dust, and mold. All right, I'm going to switch gears now and talk about the advisory team that we have. The IQ advisory team was established by the board and assists the district by reviewing IQ-related information, recommending policies to maintain improved air quality with the district facilities and in school buildings. The district advisory team is comprised of voluntary members of our community and reflect the diversity of community by including school leadership, staff, parents, community members, and IQ professionals. The IQ consultants, Richard, and BVSD operational staff are the direct liaisons to the committee to facilitate reporting, coordination, and education activities. The advisory team is in its fourth year. Some of the accomplishments have been establishing an IQ liaison at almost every one of our schools, and these were principal-appointed. Each liaison received a copy of the IQ audit of their school with recommendations on next steps. Liaisons also report IQ issues as they arise and communicate with the advisory team. The team has also put in procedures for reporting and responding to IQ issues as they arise throughout the district. The past year, the team has been working hard to create recommendations around IQ and Integrated Pest Management, IPM, and we will be presenting these to the board later this spring for your consideration. Finally, the team is currently working on recommendations concerning school supply lists for parents. So, now I'd like to introduce my colleague Molly McLaughlin, who is the Director of Facilities.
Good evening. I wanted to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the pre and post. I wanted to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the pre and post-bond audit as we go through the schools. So during both of these audits, we're collecting the same type of data. We're collecting data on thermal conditions, so relative humidity, temperature. We're also collecting data on ventilation adequacy. So what is the measurement of carbon dioxide in these spaces? We're also collecting data on cleaning effectiveness. So we measure, it's called addo, adden, seen triphosphate, ATP basically, and it's an indicator of cleanliness on desktops. The other information that we are collecting are visual inspections. We go through 26 different items, looking to see if we have identified odors, if we have a lot of trash, if we have clutter, if we have plants, carpet conditions, and really getting a sense of all of these classroom spaces. Staff and faculty surveys are also conducted, both pre and post-audit, and at each location to identify potential problems that may negatively impact indoor air quality. The purpose for collecting all of this data pre-bond renovation was to establish baseline condition and provide guidance on how to improve overall indoor air quality. The pre-bond audit identified two overall conditions. Number one, the district needed to focus efforts on increased awareness on indoor air quality, not only with operational staff, but also school staff. Number two, the second conclusion, the district also had opportunity to improve facility condition throughout the renovation at each school. As a result, the bond renovations and the post-bond audit, there are outcomes that were observed. Cleaning of high-touch services, mainly desktops, has not improved. It used to be a persistent problem in all of our buildings as indicated by the data throughout the study. Another outcome is that new HVAC systems that Gita had talked about previously, they've been commissioned, they've been installed, but we still need to constantly monitor them and adjust them to ensure that we have adequate air exchange coming into the buildings, thus adding fresh air and reducing carbon dioxide in classrooms. So we have been doing this through monitoring minor programming changes, fixing malfunctioning equipment, modifying cubic feet per second that are, that air is moving through the bit, the space, and we've seen marked improvements of reduced carbon dioxide levels as recently as January. Thermal comfort issues are still being noted, especially among staff and teachers. And then the collaborative work of the indoor air quality advisory team on guidance in schools is seeing results in reduced clutter in classrooms, increased awareness and calls on any type of indoor air quality or indoor environmental quality concerns, and writing of draft policy. So some of the things that we're doing in operations is we've implemented new standard operating procedures on how we handle calls. We've also hired a third-party consultant to help us with doing testing and evaluation on calls. And we are collaborating with the indoor air quality advisory committee on drafting new policies to bring to the board later this spring. So moving forward, continued collection of pertinent school absenteeism, symptom-related data will allow the insight into impact of renovations in student-teacher health and performance, and preliminary indications indicate that the renovations, educational efforts, changes in operational practices, and increased awareness really has a positive impact on indoor air quality in our classrooms. Thank you.
Just to add a couple of things, thanks to the board for this initiative. We're one of very few districts in the nation doing work like this. Two, we will have a final report that comes from the pre-bond assessment and the post-bond assessment, once we're done with the 2014 bond. And in that, we'll have absentee data and I think we'll show, and I think the results will be very in our favor, absenteeism has dropped considerably with the improvements that we've made through this initiative. So again, thank you for allowing us to do this great work. I think we'll be seeing great strides as we continue through the bond program. Any questions?
Board members, Donna?
I, I have a question, just because it, all, everything you guys said is great. Thank you for giving us that information. But I was thinking back to an email that we received from a parent very concerned about air fresheners in the room. Can you comment anything on that feedback or what you observed?
You want to address it, Gita? They've been working on it in the committee, so.
We, that, that's one thing among many that we'll be including in our recommendations that will come forth to you. Yes, so that's come up definitely to the intention of the committee and that's in our recommendations.
Picking up back on Donna's comment, there's just also a lot of scented products students use and we've also heard feedback, not just on an air freshener, but also heavily scented things. Will you be addressing that at all? I, I know that gets a lot.
We talked about it quite a bit. We spent actually two meetings on that topic and I, I think we landed, and Molly, you can help me, I think we're not going to address, you know, perfumes or smells on students. It seemed like that would be crossing the line for our committee, but it did come up as an issue and I can't remember the language exactly, that's, basically, if, if there's something that's causing an issue for somebody, that, that there is language in there that will give the principal support to help, you know, find a solution for it. So, yeah.
One other just quick question, I think it's Molly.
Yes.
You said that you noticed the, what did I write down? The desktops were concerned. Is that students, staff, teachers, everybody?
We're, yeah, we're testing desktops right now, student desktops, and so, yes, we haven't seen any drop in cleanliness from pre-bond to post-bond. So we are continuing our efforts in educating our custodial staff on why it's important, why we need to continue to do it, not only our custodial staff, but also the teachers and all of school staff, that it's all of our jobs to make sure that we create a healthy and safe environment for all of our students.
And that cleaning product you recommended, or you, you said, is that recommended to be used on desks?
So ATP is actually the test to determine how effective the cleaning is. So we're also right now doing a cleaning study in our schools this spring to determine how effective the cleaning of desktops is and how it affects student health and, and if we clean the desktops on a regular basis, twice a week, how that improves student health. So, we kind of have a dual thing going here right now and we're seeing, we're seeing good results, so.
Other questions, Stacy?
I think, Molly, you mentioned clutter, reducing clutter. Can you speak a little more to that? Is that clutter in a classroom? Is it clutter on a desk? Is it just basic clutter? Could you just expand on that a little bit?
So clutter can be anywhere. Often, when you go into these pre-bond, staff that have been in that classroom for numerous years and they like to collect stuff, and now that we're transitioning into new shared spaces, we're trying to encourage them to less is more. And so clutter can be old couches that they bring from home, it can be boxes of stuff, or it can be loads of paper that we are no longer using, things that they printed out 10 years ago that are still stuffed into, to cubbies. And so clutter is just a variety of things, whether it's paper, or materials, or plants, or furniture, and again, like Gita spoke, we are really trying to encourage less is more.
And are the charters included in this whole thing? Yeah?
We've actually had great representation from peak to peak and other.
Great, okay, thank you.
Other questions, Kathy?
So I think it was as part of this policy, we collect information when you call in your child to be sick, and I'm assuming that you'll include that in the surveys, but are you seeing like a reduction in respiratory illnesses? Or do you have any kind of trends or anything you can tell us before the final report?
I don't think we have the data to share yet, Kathy, but that will be, that is our plan to fill, providing the final report.
You said you saw, that you see something because you said you saw.
We're seeing a trend of a downward turn in absenteeism, but it's, it's tough right now to really dive into the date, the data until we're all the way through the bond program.
Are you seeing a good response to parents?
We are seeing a great response to the parents, yes. But again, some of that can be challenging because some parents don't answer the questions all the time, et cetera. You might be one of them. So anyway, that's what we're.
Sometimes you don't know.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to dive through, so. And Richard is.
My daughter's home with a fever, I don't know if it's.
Really analyzing the data right now on the absenteeism, so. It's kind of like writing a novel and we're halfway through and we're not ready to publish the book yet.
And do you collect that data on staff as well, from the buildings and illnesses?
Richard, are we collecting the data on staff?
Students.
Just students, that's what I thought, yeah, just students.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep.
I answered the question.
Anything else?
Any other questions? I have, you know, we, we heard this presentation about the importance of plants and reducing anxiety with students. Is it possible to use fake plants or big considers clutter?
Well, we're, what we have found is that plants get overwatered and tend to have mold and then our, our students with asthma, et cetera, struggle. So as we move forward, we're trying to reduce plants, we're also trying to reduce aquariums and other animals in our classrooms unless we have proper ventilation, et cetera, so.
Would a fake plant be okay?
If it's dust, then.
Okay.
So that's the.
Yeah, we addressed that also in the recommendations that will be coming forward and I, I don't think we landed on outlining them completely because that, that was also a big part of the conversation, so really trying to specify that we don't want flowering plants or plants that can be triggers and they need to be properly cared, they need to be, you know, you don't want a plant on the carpet where then you're going to create mold, so having some guidelines around it. And then similarly, if it is an issue for somebody, then there's some language in there that can help them, you know, have a little leverage, yeah.
It's really the overabundance.
Right, okay, so Richard is adding, it's the overabundance of, of plants and maybe in some classes, animals that can really cause issues for some of our students and staff, yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much, this is a great update. All right, our next item is our legislative update, so we're in the second month of the legislative session, and if anyone wants to share thoughts or updates.
We're still waiting for the mill levy bill to drop, so not a whole lot to report. Not much on the school finance front because nothing will happen till the March forecast, so I think there's really not a whole lot to say right now on stuff the board would necessarily be concerned with.
Yes, but we did receive a draft of the mill levy bill.
We did, and there's also a draft of a charter bill to address leveling the playing field and making sure that the application requirements for charter schools are consistent across the board so that all charter schools are playing by the same rules as public schools and addressing some of the issues around the State Board of Education, providing some insight into their decision-making so that we understand kind of when we're in front of them, what they're looking at and what the important issues are. So I think that bill is going to drop sometime in the next week or two, and so we're working on, I think that it's consistent with our legislative platform and I think we're looking to find other districts. I think Westminster's looking at passing a resolution tonight and I think we have around 20 districts already that are supporting it.
On the uniform mill levy bill, I will be interested, when we get the final language, to have another work session on it because there were some things in that bill in the current draft that I thought were kind of tough for me to get my hands around, or arms around, I think is the right phrase, so I'd like to understand it better before I leap to conclusions, if possible. Okay, any other things? Okay, so if it's okay, can I move on to the action items? All right. We have 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, January 28, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, January 28, 2020 Regular Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Eisenhower Elementary, 7.5 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Gold Hill Elementary School, 7.6 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Jamestown Elementary School, 7.7 Approval of a Contract for Elevator Modernization and Maintenance, 7.8 Approval of a Contract for Repair and Renovation of Monarch High School Kitchen and Wrestling Room, 7.9 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at Angevine Middle School, 7.10 Contract to Buy and Sell Real Estate Commercial for 805 and 865 Excalibur Street, Lafayette, Colorado, and Related Lease Justice High School Property. 7.11 Resolution 20-09 Acknowledgement of Withdrawal of Sanitas Academy Application. All right, are there any items board members would like to pull? Okay, 7.10 is pulled by Donna. Any other items board members would like to pull? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the remaining items?
So moved.
By Kitty, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion or question on the remaining items, Kathy?
In regards to 7.11, I just want to say thank you to Kathleen and Rob and to Emily for, I think, the extremely professional work that went into looking at Sanitas and all of the hard work. I think ultimately it resulted in their withdrawing of the contract, but I was impressed with the quality of the work of the three of you and I'm sure there were lots of other people I'm not mentioning, but I just think it was a lot of hard work and we'll see where it ends up another day in time, but thank you for all your hard work in helping guide us through what can be kind of a fraught process, but I think it wasn't because of all your hard work, and Bill too. So, thank you.
I'll echo that and also just commend the changes we've made to LBD and LBD hyphen R, and we're sort of trying out our new standards around contract after our consultation with the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, and I think it's really paying off that we are, we have partnered with the national organization to help us through this process. It felt a lot better to me and a lot more grounded than some of our processes beforehand. So thanks again for pursuing that partnership and implementing those changes. I think we do have some further learnings and we may want to look at a couple more tweaks to those two policies, which are of course always in an evolutionary state, I think. All right, so with that, any other comments about the remaining items? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Markquist.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zuss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we're going on to action items. 8.1 Items Pulled from Consent Grouping, 7.10 Contract to Buy and Sell Real Estate Commercial at 805 and 865 Excalibur Street was pulled. Donna, do you want to, do you want to make a motion or?
No, I don't. I don't want to make a motion, I just wanted a moment to address it.
Oh, okay.
To say something.
We still have, I think we have to make a motion though.
A motion.
Do we have to make a motion? Yes. Oh, and then we discuss it? I'm going to move that we approve 7.10. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great, go ahead.
I, I don't disagree about approving it. I sat on the fence for quite a while, thinking, is, is this the best use of money? And after meeting with Rob and talking about it, I do realize that BVSD can benefit from having this property for educational purposes because that's a growing part of our district. So I want to start off by saying that, but I felt I needed to say a little bit more because I've just been quiet about the whole situation. I want to say that the building renovations only address part of the problem, not the heart of the matter, and that is where my doubts came in originally. And I want to say that I am not implying that these students should not get our help. I spent my entire career helping students grow academically and to become successful in their post-secondary outcomes. One year ago though, this month, our board listened to several students from Justice High, and you can go back and review the tape from February 26. Several students had only been at Justice High for a few months, some from our district, some from within, that weren't in our district. Many students come to the school after being court ordered due to truancy issues. Several of the Justice High students talked about feeling rejected and undervalued in their home high schools. One student in particular, her name is Tori, and she introduced herself at the meeting, pulled at my heartstrings because that student said that at her home high school, she was told that she was a lost cause. Not every student succeeds even at Justice High. Recently, I spoke with one of our former BVSD students who felt rejected at Justice High just the same. Students need to feel they are valued and belong. When students feel rejected, their psychological needs are not being met and this leads to anxiety and depression that often lasts throughout their lifetime.
anxiety and depression that often lasts throughout their lifetime. Students need to feel valued and accepted, along with the realization that they are moving forward academically, so they don't feel the need to leave school, run away, be truant. Rob's strategic plan, I do think, is going to address some of these needs, but what I needed to say here is, I originally had doubts about where the money's being spent, and I just want to make sure that at those home high schools, that those students left, that we're investing in making those students feel not only valued and respected, but that they feel that they're moving forward academically. So I just needed to say that, thank you.
Okeydoke. Any other comments or discussion about 7.10? All right, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next action. Sort of, not really, I'll do it later. Okay. 8.2 Appointment of District Audit Committee Members. So every year, I'm sorry, every two years, we have to reappoint our district audit committee, and Kitty gave a great report on that today, so thank you, so that's what this is about. Do we have a motion to approve the committee members that were presented in our board packet? Kathy moved.
Second.
By Kitty. Any questions or comments about the committee members that are presented here?
Just a public thanks to Bob Smart for stepping up. He's provided such sage advice, and we're really lucky to have a member of our community with his background and experience volunteering his time to help guide us through the audit process, so, and thanks to the board members who are stepping up too, because it's a volunteer on top of volunteers, so thank you to the board members.
Yeah, I'll echo that, we're so appreciative. All right, Laura, would you please call, please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, our next item is study items. 9.1 Agenda Setting. Just to recap, I heard a couple of things in board comment. The first was getting an idea of our timeline to address the disparities and discipline issues with our kids of color and by socioeconomic group. And then Kathy, you had one?
Just an update on our safety and security policies around lockdown drills.
Lockdown drills, and just getting a better understanding, Lisa?
Yeah, I had spoken last week with the group about the resolutions that were done in Denver and a few other places around safe storage of gun safety, and I'm hoping we could address that as well.
Okay, so we'll put that on something to discuss in some, some forum, some point. Okay, great. What else? Donna?
Just eventually, once our screening is done for the kindergarten dyslexic group, I want to know that we'll have data on that.
Is it okay if that's rolled into our annual literacy update? That usually happens in the spring? Does that sound like an okay avenue for that?
I know it's coming up, and I just want to make sure that we're informed.
I think that's what we've been doing. Is that correct? All right. Okay, anything else? Miss Stacy?
I seem to recall that we talked about we were going to revisit the open enrollment process, so I just want to make sure that that's somewhere, because I've been, I mean, this was one today, but I've been hearing more rumblings about the process, and just wanted to make sure it was on our docket somewhere.
I've also heard some feedback recently about that, so I would, I'm also interested in that discussion, so maybe if you want to get back to us on the timeline, I know we had talked about it for this year.
I would say that there's a connection to our open enrollment policy and the discussion that we're going to be having within the next month or so, and that's around declining enrollment, right? And so I think that, you know, after that conversation, we'll be able to get better board direction on kind of where we want to go in regards to reviewing that policy.
Just, and one comment on that conversation, there's, some districts have an appointed long-range planning committee that rolls in enrollment programs and facilities, and I'm wondering, and it sometimes has community involvement in it, and I hate to create another committee, but sometimes I wonder if that would be something we'd consider.
A great topic for discussion at our, our meeting that we'll have in the next month or so.
Tina, I like that idea, especially given our budgetary constraints with flatter, declining enrollment, I think that's, would make sense to have that conversation.
All right, any other thoughts or comments as we approach Valentine's Day president? Okay, it should be, we should, another holiday. All right.
Before we dismiss.
Okay.
Kachu, mid gavel, just as a reminder, the action that you take took this evening, board members, we still have to appoint another board member to the district audit committee, that within the item that you approved, that was not, that was not actually approved. We can do that at our next board meeting? So just as a reminder, so I think we.
So we just have Kitty right now?
We just have Kitty and Bob Smart.
Okay.
That was in the item, so what we would have to do at our next board meeting, I believe, and Laura, I'm looking at you, is that we would have to have a nomination, and then they would vote on that nomination?
I'm looking at Bill too. He's shaking, he said yes.
Is that something we can address now, or do you want, do we want to wait?
You can do it either way, I think it'd be fine.
Can we do it now? Can we add an item to the agenda?
Overlooked, putting the name in the board member.
Can I make an amendment to include? What, no?
We've satisfied the public notice requirement clearly. This was clearly on the board's agenda. I think it was just an oversight, so maybe we could just call it like a partner motion to fill the whole agenda item, or we can bring you a clean item at the next meeting.
I'd like to make a partner motion to fill the whole agenda item. Okay, she's going, we should probably say, who's going to be on the audit? Can I, Lisa? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. So I'd like to make a motion that the second board member be Lisa Meyer and Sweeney? Oh, I got it wrong. Second. Do we need to vote?
Yeah, you should vote.
So Tina and Kathy?
I just want to nominate Lisa.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can call a roll.
Okay, I'm going to take the vote, because I have Tina making the motion and Kathy seconding the motion, so here we go. Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, and thank you.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran. That's it, yes. And Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Rob, can I adjourn the meeting now?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.